Let me get back here. Okay, we can open the meeting.
Roger, do you want me to share my screen?
Yes, if you could, that would be great. Who do we have here?
Oh yeah, I'll need you to give me.
I just clicked it.
Okay. Right, it's. Order.
Better to read.
Members?
No taste on. I wouldn't do this to you. I think you're gonna be like, no taste. I gotta put sea salt on it. That's why it's salted. No taste, right?
All right.
Who's seasoning their food with?
Yeah, could we?
Now I'm done. I just had.
Yeah. The screen there. Do a roll call.
Richard Wright.
Walt Meisner.
Lindsay Butler.
Larry's trying to log in. Do we have Lindsay? Yes.
I don't see Larry.
Lindsay, are you?
She's there, yes.
I saw that Skip is on as well.
I see Lindsay, I just couldn't hear her. All right, he'll read the notifications. Order. With the exception of. Time, we do not have a public hearing tonight. Agenda items are those reasonably anticipated by the chairman forty-eight hours prior to the meeting. A vote may be taken at the meeting. Documents submitted for review can be found under the planning board tab on the town website. No new materials have been submitted. This meeting is being recorded. Recorded minutes will be the official record. Written minutes will be prepared for easier reference. As a remote meeting, please keep your microphone on mute unless you have been invited by the chairman to speak. When the floor is open for public comment, please raise your hand using the feature provided in Zoom and wait until you're recognized by the chairman to speak. And I have a more.
I move approval of the agenda.
Okay.
In a second.
Second.
Do I have a first?
Yeah. I mean. Roger, I have to say that your connection is fading in and out.
Let's see what I can do.
Roger, it's Skip. It'll help your bandwidth if you turn your video off.
Hello, is that Skip?
It'll help your bandwidth and cut down on the glitchiness of your connection if you turn your video off. Just go with audio.
Yeah, okay. Get back to that. All right. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay.
You can call us out for the roll call.
Okay, we'll just start at the beginning then. Roger Hoyt, present. Walt?
Present.
Richard.
Lindsay?
Present.
Larry? Still logging in, okay. Remember the notifications, so. I'll read them again, then. Order exact time. Today, order exact times. Agenda items may vary, with the exception of public hearings, which cannot start prior to the scheduled time. There are no public hearings tonight. Agenda items are those reasonably anticipated by the chairman. Votes prior to the meeting. Votes may be taken. Documents submitted for review can be found on the planning board tab on the town website. Meeting is being recorded. The recorded minutes will be the official record. But written minutes will be prepared for easier reference to the topics covered and actions taken. Is this a remote meeting? Please keep your microphone on mute unless you have been invited by the chairman to speak. Open for public comment, please raise your hand using the feature provided in Zoom. Wait until you're recognized, the chairman to speak. And first item, the agenda approval. Care of a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I moved.
Second.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now. Hello, Larry.
Hey, sorry guys.
Larry? Just say you're present.
I'm present.
Okay.
Yeah, and I read the minutes, I'm good.
All right. We'll take a vote to approve the agenda. Roger Hoyt, chairman, yay. Richard?
Yay.
Walt Meisner?
Yay.
Larry Boudreau?
Yay.
Lindsay Butler?
Yes.
Aye, all in favor, pass unanimously. Agenda is approved. Without amendment. Chairman comments? I don't have. Richard, do you have any?
I don't have anything, no.
Walt, anything to report from the Muraona Review Team?
Nothing new to report since the last meeting.
Okay, and I have. We don't have any correspondence from other. Sounds or decision notices. State of emergency, we're still under the legislation which affected permits, chapter fifty-three. And keen. Which during the states declared state of C, our timelines are paused. We will have sixty days. From the end of the state agency for our site plan review decisions. We must begin. Within forty-five days, but we continue to act. During this period, which we're allowed to do. Next item, old business. So does update anything with Bray Avenue? No. Item five B, the application for site plan review, earthland development, for the motel, map seventy-one lot twenty-three. Yeah, we've drawn the application. Item C, application for site plan review for the right property on Main Street. Marshall Building, map sixty-two lots, one twenty-one, one twenty-three. We have not received any additional material on the applicants. We have received the second soul for peer review services from Ty and Bond. To go along with the first one we received earlier from West Sampson. Do we have any? Comments on the applicant?
Yeah, the. Survey for the traffic study is something I don't understand because that's the largest cut of this ten to thirteen thousand dollars. And it's no more impact to this piece of property than the tavern has been. Plus, this property has five exits versus tavern has one. So I don't understand why we're looking for a traffic study for that piece of property because the impact rate is a lot less than the tavern.
I think at least we have a. It's a separate item under the. Proposals. If we feel it's necessary, I don't know that it is at this point. We were. Wait for guidance. The police department and if they have any recommendation issues with what proposed, we haven't. Have anything formal yet from them, I think. Had some discussions with them and.
Yeah, I had a discussion with them today and they felt like that there was no more impact than what was there, but they haven't been asked by the board for anything yet.
I think part of the problem, Richard, is that because you don't have a tenant, you don't know what business you're putting in there. If it's a restaurant, it would, you know, the tavern has its customers. This restaurant would have its own customers. It's a sixty-seat restaurant. How many cars is that gonna bring? How is that gonna be handled in the town? How is it gonna impact the town? You might be right, might have very little impact on the town, but I think that's why it's normally required in such a.
Well, Walt, I have to agree with you on a certain degree on that, but it's never been done before in a town for a traffic study for individual business. And if that's a preference, we're gonna, I mean, something we want to start doing now, is it gonna be upheld with everybody? And that's gonna make it impossible for business to come to town.
Good point.
We're talking eight thousand dollars, Walt. I don't got that kind of money for a traffic study. That's gonna be, I have five egresses.
I have, I have no idea. This is not an area of expertise for me.
Yeah.
What the obvious. Reason, rationale for it is. And why it was, you know, asked. Now, I think we would then have to. Both of the. Both of the proposals have traffic. One of the teams had a traffic. Now. I haven't seen.
I think it's something that you can put in into the minutes if you want, that if it ends up being a restaurant and that it does seem to be a traffic situation, we can actually aggress it at that time. If you got it in the minutes, at least you have it there, you're protected.
I don't know how. How did the rest of the board feel? I'm not the only one here.
I'd have to agree with Rick on that. I don't feel that it would bring a lot more traffic to the area. But I'd also be interested to hear what if police or fire had any issue with it, and if they don't see an issue with it, I wouldn't go through with the study.
And I did talk to the fire department today and they said they really have no issue with it because they have plenty of egress to the lot by having five different directions they can come in. And that's their only issue, was to be able to public safety for the fire. As far as everything else goes, the egress to Maple is in the center of Maples and is not on the curb. Same thing with Center Street. Route twelve, there's no hazards to exiting the property at any of the five locations.
May I ask? Roger and Skip, what is the normal procedure for? The police and fires input into this thing? Do they? Come to a meeting or do they provide something to the board in writing, or do they do that, or? Does the applicant just go and talk to them and tell us and we believe what the applicant says? And I'm not asking any aspersions on you, Richard.
Right.
Oh, I agree.
What's the process?
The usual process is that, you know, they, once the application is received, it's distributed to other town boards. And. Within. We await their comment. Sometimes they have comments, sometimes we get no comments. Most of the time, we don't get.
So it would be up to them to ask if they felt the traffic study was necessary? Is that what you're saying?
Roger, Skip has his hand up.
Yeah, go ahead, Skip.
Yeah, Roger, I just looked at the reply we got from Ty and Bond. It said. Was this traffic study and that was actually listed as option. Yeah. I mean, it's, I think the only reason we may need something like that was if another department within the town, be it police, fire, police, fire, DPW. Would be requesting, you know, that. That would be, you know, or if we had a major concern thinking it was gonna be high congestion or something like that, you know, I think that would be a reason, but they just, I don't think it's an outright requirement that we're looking for at this time.
I have no reason to ask for it. I'm just.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just asking for questions.
Right, and if we. You know, all agree that there isn't a need for it, that that's fine. I just, at least in the request. Wanted to have that as an option if it. Came to be needed, you know, it's in, it's our right to ask or if we think it's needed. It's not a an absolute requirement if there's certainly no need for it.
Well, Roger, I think if the police department and the fire department both have said that there's, they don't have an issue. Then I would make a motion that we waive the. Traffic study for that area, seeing as how we've already seen the drawing in all of the plans and the amount of egresses and ways in and out, in my opinion. Already. Handles the whole, the whole lot situation.
I would second that.
Okay, that's. That's fine. Richard, did you have a preference on? Either of the two firms we have proposals from or?
On the motion?
Well. Yeah, I don't know yet, because I mean, now we have to get a proposal without the traffic study because that's the largest part of that whole bill.
Well, they, they have it broken into two parts, at least on the Ty and Bond one that we received. It was forty-five hundred for the peer reviews itself. And the traffic study was an additional six thousand dollars. Got the Western Sampson one in detail to see if that's the same way.
Roger, Skip has his hand up again.
Okay, Skip.
Yeah, Roger, Walt was trying to tell you, you have a motion that was made and seconded.
Okay.
And I say, my preference would be Ty and Bond. Go with him.
Okay, so. We have a motion to. Not require a traffic. Pending. An express need for it by the police, fire, fire, other board. And if we can amend that motion to include against preference to proceed with Ty and Bond.
Larry Yuliman, right?
Yes.
Okay. And Lindsay seconded it. Okay, you wanna do a roll call?
I'll do a roll call. So all in favor of the motion as presented and edited, Roger Hoyt, chairman, yes? Richard, you're not on this one, you're.
I agree with Ty and Bond.
As the applicant, but you're not voting as a member of the board.
Right, right.
So you're not involved in this one. So Walt Meisner?
I agree.
Lindsay Butler?
Yes.
Larry Boudreau?
I agree.
So the motion carries four votes affirmative and none against. Richard, have any further discussion?
No, no, not at this time. We knew, I needed to get this done so the engineer can get his paperwork to them and also to the conservation so we can get this thing wrapped up.
Okay, does any other members have any questions for the applicant?
None here.
None here.
No.
So we'll proceed with. Setting up that fifty-three G account for funding. And that's just for the peer review services. Additional services as they explain are additional costs for later when you get into construction and.
Will somebody let me know when I need to give that money and who I give it to?
Yep, Heather will. That was Heather. Okay. Imagine this is just a lump sum anyway. And completed within one period. They estimated four weeks, so. Probably wouldn't be the need for interim payments. Okay, thank you, Richard.
Yep.
Are you? Gonna resume attending the meeting now?
Yep, I'm attending.
Okay, so let the record show that Richard Wright is now returning to.
Walt, did you stop sharing your screen?
No, it's.
Alls I got is a big Zoom in front of me.
Can others see it?
I don't know where I go from there.
Can others see the screen? I'm seeing nodded, people nodding their heads that they can see it.
Yeah, I can see it, Walt.
Yes. Yeah, Larry, maybe you. Got out of the Zoom screen.
I can see everybody's face over here on the right-hand side, so.
Now, the next, the next item is the open discussion, public.
Okay, all right.
Roger?
Yes, I'm just. I guess I'm still back on. I'm trying to get the video to work again. But we can, I can't see the screen to see if anyone is. Comment for us for the. Open discussion, any new. New items from. To be discussed.
I see no one raising their hand, Roger.
Yep.
If you can identify yourself?
Yeah, this is Ryan McGowan. I'm not sure if I'm on the agenda, but I was asked to be at the meeting today. And I also don't know if this is the right time to bring it up.
I think you're, it is, Ryan, because you're not on the agenda, but it's open discussion, public comment.
Yeah. Yep.
Well, I was told by the building inspector to be at this meeting. And I guess there was, we started a forest, a state-approved forest cutting plan up on Hastings Road and near the cemetery and I was not aware that there was a scenic road bylaw in town, even though I've read the zoning bylaws in this town. Probably a couple dozen times. And so I'm not sure where the conversation will go or what the steps in the process are. But there was a stone wall, but we widened. There was a break in the stone wall and it's a very small stone wall. Many of the sections are like three rocks laying on the ground. And we did open it up a little bit. And the state did approve where the forester was going to put the landing to load the logs and clear some of the brush and and I guess somebody was upset about it and so here we are.
I don't think anybody on this committee, if I can speak, Roger, I don't think anybody was upset on this committee. What we were mostly concerned is about is that we're seeing a lot of activity happening in the town and we don't know about it. And all of a sudden, we see a tree cut down on a scenic road and a wall widened and we're saying, what's the process for us being informed about that, what is? And what are, what are the enforcement procedures that the town has when somebody doesn't have the proper permit? I, since that last meeting, I know that there were some butters or some other people in that area who were upset about it, which is why it was called our attention in the first place. But my, my primary issue is, is that we have a scenic road bylaw. There's incidences where it's being ignored, not necessarily you, but it's being ignored and we wanted to know, well, so what is the process? My understanding, since I've learned since then, is that forestry is considered agriculture. Regardless of what your future intent for that property is. And so apparently for, because it's agriculture, there, it trumps the scenic bylaw. I haven't seen anything official on that, but I heard that that was in some email correspondences that we had. So in your particular case, it might not have been an issue. We had an issue on Cushing, where, on Cushing Street, where the same thing happened. And the applicant came and had to do a public hearing and go through the scenic bylaw thing. And it, we just wanted to make sure we weren't treating one person one way and another applicant or another person another way. So that's, that's, that's my high-level summary of what was a good half-hour discussion at the last meeting.
Okay, and I certainly appreciate that and I felt like we did go through the necessary channels. I hired a forestry person to come out. They went through the state, they applied for the permit, we notified the butters, we published it in the newspapers, we waited the thirty days. We waited an additional sixty days after that, mainly because the weather wasn't cooperating. So, you know, I felt like we did go through the necessary steps and and, you know, for somebody who's been in town and owned, owned multiple properties in town, I feel like I should be very familiar with the bylaws and this is one that I have literally never heard of. So I do apologize because if I knew it even existed, I probably would have approached you folks and, and made sure that we've been through the proper channels.
Now, I'm not entirely, and I'm not an expert on this, but I do think that after your work is done, you, you are required to repair the stone wall or to put it back in place.
I'll make sure it looks better than it did beforehand.
Probably.
I do take pride in my properties that I own, so.
Probably will.
Roger, Skip has his hand up.
Okay, Skip, go ahead.
Yeah, I just looked on the website, the actual scenic bylaws and it's, it's actually not under the zoning board, zoning rules. It's actually under us. It's Rules and Regulations of the Clementary Granting Authority. So it is not under ZBA, so. To that point, having read, you know, where you said you had read the zoning bylaw, you wouldn't have found it there, so. You know, I can attest to that.
And from a zoning perspective, I mean, that's where you would think it would be, but, so I apologize that I didn't miss that one.
And we, where a lot of us are newbies here and we're learning about this at the same time you are, so.
It's, they're complicated matters and they never, they don't seem to get simpler along the way.
It is difficult when they're in different, different sections than referenced by the bylaw and I totally understand that. Now, am I back on with video and you're hearing me fine?
Yes.
Okay.
There is someone else raising her hand, but I don't know who it is.
Okay.
Hi, hello, planning board? Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Kimberly Shaw, my husband Kyle, we're residents of Little Waterted, Conroe. Hi, I'm Kimberly Shaw. My husband Kyle, we're residents of Little Watatic Pond Road. Firstly, I just wanted to thank the board for responding to, we had a family letter sent in regards to Danny Gardner's current proposal. Well, thank you for that account. Is, did Danny Gardner withdraw his application with or without prejudice on this particular application as he had done with the previous?
Well, that's two different boards. So his other thing, zoning board of appeals, has that. Site plan review does not, so there are no judgments either way on that one. So he just withdrew.
He weren't sure if that was one that followed with the other.
No, nope. If he chose, he could reapply again with the same or, you know, completely new project, either way.
Yeah, again, we're hearing there will be another project upcoming, but nothing has officially been applied for.
At least I, I don't think the board hasn't heard anything in the future.
Excuse me, the other question we had, just staying in the same ballpark, is where he has clear-cut that entire acreage that he owns currently. Was that too going to require a permit because it is greater than the 7,500 square feet? And did he apply for the proper channels to do that?
Yeah, we have not had any permit applications for that.
Okay. We have noticed a large disruption in the neighborhood with traffic and noise and different.
Yeah, if it was your comment or someone else, but they did say that. Without the trees there, you do hear the road noise more.
And if he's, you know, to be held accountable for clearing that entire acreage, moving forward, we want to make sure something like that doesn't happen again.
I just want to add, I think your question's a very fair one. It bothers me a great deal that he did go up there and essentially clear that lot in a very disruptive way.
Correct.
Now has withdrawn his site review. The, we don't know if he'll put another proposal through or what it was, but it's left it a very prominent piece of property in the town. And that was also part of our conversation in the last, not necessarily that particular case, but it was an offshoot of what we talked about at the last board meeting, where we were concerned about the bylaws not having the right checks places in there where somebody can do that, leave it a total disaster, and then
It's horrible.
And it's left, you know, unattended. We are talking about that. And
Thank you.
It's something in terms of our bylaws that we need to think about. Because, you know, what would have been the appropriate procedure for that to happen? There are limits to what we can do, though. I mean, because people can do what they want to do, a large part with their properties. But as a planning board, I think we should care about that.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
I don't know how do my colleagues feel about that.
I think, Walt, I definitely agree with you that it's something that needs to be a process that can be understood and followed.
We have a resident, Ellis, would like to speak.
Okay, go ahead. Get your name.
Oh, you're still on mute? Nope, still on mute.
How about now?
Yep, you're good.
All right, I recently is the one who purchased the property on Bush Hill Road, and there was a complaint about the scenic wall that I went through under the property.
Which road?
Bush Hill Road. I don't know, the builder went up and they left a card in my machine over the weekend and said, stop work over there because there was a complaint about the entrance I went in. And then I spoke, and then he told me, well, they gave me the link to this to speak with you guys.
Yeah. As a scenic road, it would need a scenic road permit, which is a.
Yep, now, on April 12th, when I was buying the property, I actually called up conservation, and I told them the property's address. And I asked them, I said, is there any special permits I need to enter that property and to start clearing? And the response was, it was at 10:00 a.m. On April 12th, I called because I actually wrote everything down. I was given the go-ahead. There was no permits needed. But where I went to that property, there was already an opening in the stone wall. When I went in there with my mini, I didn't have to move anything. I went right in. And now I'm trying to do a perk test right now. I have a perk test scheduled for the 24th. I was asked to bring in the bigger machine for the deep hole. So I moved a couple of rocks off to the side each way to get the machine through the wall. Now, the whole point of these bylaws is for the general safety, welfare, and well-being of the public, correct? With that road so narrow as it is, there's no place for me to even park a truck to even be over there. So my trucks will be on the side of that road, and that road's not wide enough for two vehicles passing anyway. So if anything, this is making that road more safe when we're up there as it is. But my whole intent, I'm trying to get a sign right now on a perk test, and then I'll file for the perm, the wall opening, once I have all that all set where the house is going and everything. I'll apply for the permit to enter through the wall.
Yeah, but to do any disturbance, the scenic road permit should be done first.
But what I don't understand is that I need to apply for a driveway opening for the scenic road, but how am I supposed to apply for a driveway opening on the property if you don't even know where the house is sitting? Because you haven't had the septic design or the perk test done. Happens if the only place perks is where I just had a permit for the driveway opening.
Yeah, yeah, understood.
I mean, I'm going to apply for the permit for the driveway opening, but I'm just trying to get this perk test done. The only thing I did was move the machine, and there already wasn't. What I don't understand is that someone wiped out that whole stone wall to the right of my property. They get down to the right lot, and they actually took out the property stake. The whole wall got completely destroyed. Where were you guys on that one? The whole drill mark in the wall and everything all completely destroyed out of that.
And that was by someone else?
Someone else. That wasn't for me. When we were up there surveying the property, there's supposed to be a drill mark. That whole thing was cleared out, and there's a pile of stones over there. I went through a spot.
When was that cleared out?
I couldn't even tell you when it was cleared out.
It was before you got there, is what you said.
Before I got the land. Yeah, it was whoever went on the property to the right of me, because it's clear as day. It went to the other property right over the property boundary. And where I went through was an actual, already an opening. I went through with my mini and didn't disturb anything. You know, I just, just trying to make it so I can park my truck off the street, and it opened that much. It wasn't that much.
May I ask a question about the scenic road? Sorry to interrupt. How did the town come up with this list of roads that they deemed scenic?
It was approved at a town meeting.
I know, but who, who actually, that's okay, I'm just curious.
Understand that the scenic road is a state law thing, and every town has scenic roads that follow this state procedure. Now, which roads were defined as scenic and which was before I was probably even born, but, you know.
No, it was a newer reg. I actually, I read it at the state level, and they basically gave the towns open concepts to determine which road they want to determine. They can determine any roads, scenic road, but I'm just curious as to the process that the town used, because Lashua Road, which is right behind me where I live, I mean, there's, some of these roads shouldn't be deemed scenic. Like, they don't offer any historic precedence. So I was just wondering if anybody knew the process that the town did. And then looking at this gentleman's road, Bush Hill Road, as being scenic, I mean, that's, I just, I had to look it up. I lived here for over 10 years, and I just looked it up, and it's in the middle of nowhere. It probably turns to dirt road soon after where he is.
It's all.
The only thing I can tell you, Ryan, is that the people that are on this, that are on the board right now had nothing to do with scenic roads were charged or whatever. We just have a responsibility to follow the bylaws that we have. And that's why we've been talking about which bylaws should we be visiting and coordinating better. And the sad thing about Mr. Ellis's issue is that when he called Conservation Commission on the 12th of April, he should have been told what the procedure was.
Exactly.
Or he should have been told where to go to see what the procedure is. And had he done that, he probably would have been here last month. We would have, he would have given his rationales for, you know, breaching the stone wall or cutting down a tree or whatever he had to do in order to get his equipment in. And most of the people, or at least I, would not have had any, I'd had some questions, but I wouldn't have had any major objections to it. Our issue is that we just want people to go through the process, and we need to communicate the process better, and we have to, and we also need to look at the rules and the regulations and try to see where we can make them better, clearer, and cross-referenced with other town committees, so that we don't have this screw-up like this and putting somebody like Mr. Ellis in such a difficult situation.
And I think the logical approach to that might be that since it was going, it was a temporary condition of enlarging the opening and not, not something that wasn't repairable after until a final location is determined. That's, you know, a temporary.
That's a fairly easy.
And then put it back is different than a permanent opening for a driveway.
Yeah, but.
You can intend.
For the opening, but all the stones are right behind the stone wall, the ones I pulled. They're not, they didn't disappear. They're right there.
Right.
Roger, Skip has raised his hand.
Who's that?
Skip has raised his hand.
Yeah, Roger, just a little back history on this. The actual list of the scenic roads was approved May 11th of 1974. I don't have a big book anymore, but I believe if you look in there, you'll also see that I believe that list of roads was actually approved at a town meeting.
Yes. Well, I will say in 1974, these roads were a lot more scenic because none of these trees were as big as they are. And you could see Mount Watatic, and you could see Mount Manadok, and you could see Mount Wachuset, and now they're all overgrown. So it's unfortunate. But I just want to also make the point, too, when you have somebody like Mr. Ellis or myself, that we do our best to try to follow the rules as much as we possibly can. And then when we receive a business card from the building inspector that we violate some codes, it's very disheartening, you know, and then to find out that there's a whole nother set of rules aside from the zoning rules that we're supposed to follow when we go through these processes, it can be incredibly frustrating, trying to run businesses, trying to help businesses succeed in this town. You know, I own 17 rental units in this community, and it's very challenging for these businesses to survive with so many overlapping regulations, overlapping fire department inspecting this, building department inspecting this, they conflict on a lot of things. And, you know, as you're going through those bylaws, I would be happy to help participate. But, you know, just keep that in mind, that there's a lot of conflicts from the different committees and the different authorities in this community.
I say it's probably, it's not limited to Ashburnham. You've got, you know, state building code. You've got fire codes. You've got, you know, it's not so much local, it's the state regulations.
I will tell you with firsthand knowledge, and I can give you perfectly good examples of it at the local level here. At the electric plant, at the fire department, they don't always follow the zoning rules. The chief of fire told me that the state zoning fire laws didn't apply to my four family, and, you know, he wanted to come up with his own set of rules on that. But we don't have to get into all of that, but it is at the local level. And off-record, I'm more than happy to share those experiences with you folks.
Sure.
No, and you bring up a good point, because even the light plant, I mean, we went through a discussion with that. They go through and they trim trees off of the tree warden, who happens to be Steve Nims, and they need a scenic bylaw, or they need a scenic, you know, road permit, even when they're trimming trees on a scenic road. And they've gone through and cut down trees on scenic roads without any approval. And so, I mean, I feel for your circumstance, because you're kind of the guinea pigs in this festering kind of thing that's been going on for a while, that we haven't quite figured out how to manage, or it's been ignored. And quite frankly, when you have a tree, we had a tree hearing for Mr. Aho's property up on Cushing Street now for, you know, a scenic bylaw. He was kind of the first one which kind of brought this to attention, and the tree warden was supposed to be at that committee, and he wasn't at that hearing. And so, you know, that's the problem. So I guess what I want to do, though, is because I think we kind of have a responsibility to try to help solve a problem. Mr. Ellis has an immediate problem. Now, what do we do with that? And I would defer to Roger and Skip, who have more experience on this committee, to know what we should be thinking about trying to do in this circumstance.
I know, and let Skip speak first because he's had more experience. I haven't had that Mr. Ellis's particular condition before.
I think Skip did have his hand up.
Yep, go ahead, and I see my internet connection is wavering again, so.
Yeah, it's, unfortunately, with the board has now been made aware of the situation, we have to act on it. So, I mean, that would involve a scenic road special permit hearing. So that has to be advertised in the paper for two weeks. The abutters have to be notified, and it's also going to require the rendering of a decision. So, I mean, we're already putting a time constraint on this gentleman now.
So Skip, we can't grant him a temporary temporary approval just to the fact that he can get his equipment in there so he can create the plan when he knows exactly where that opening is going to be? Or he's going to have to do it twice if he has to move his driveway?
Yeah, my whole intent is to try to keep my driveway opening where the opening is now, but where it perks, you know?
And, I mean, we can put that in as a as a finding that the applicant would like to keep his driveway where it is or where the entrance through the stone wall is currently. But we could also put a finding in there that if the need arises that the applicant has to alter where that driveway opening in the wall is going to be due to the layout of the land and, you know, sighting of the structure and required utilities, i.e. septic system. You know, it would involve, you know, a notification of the board. You know, I have to change where that breach in that wall is going to be. We can limit, you know, the breach to being so many feet wide along that lines.
Skip, would it be reasonable to say, under the circumstances, I mean, you're absolutely right, if we're going to have these rules or we have to adhere to the laws that are already in place, he would have to go through a hearing, he'd have to do that, but could we grant a temporary, a conditional ability to move the wall with the understanding that widen it so that he can get this equipment in with the understanding that he's going to replace, you know, he's going to repair it afterwards or go through the hearing? So that it's an absolute thing that will either have to be put back in place or he'll get the conditions he wants changed when he goes through the hearing. And that we at least get by this situation where we acknowledge that that he wasn't, when he called on, I'm still going back to the, when he called on April 12th, he didn't get the right information from the town. So the town owns this error, and that we can then say, okay, we'll allow you to temporarily, you know, move the rocks so that you can get the equipment in, but you have to go through the hearing, and at the hearing, you'll define how it is you want it in the future, and we'll either agree to it or you'll have to put the wall back where it is.
The problem is, we don't have the ability to forego state law, which is what this is. It's actually MGL Chapter 40, Section 15C. which is what this is. It's actually MGL chapter 40, section 15C. Um, I'm actually looking at it right now. We are only actually issuing the permit for the cutting and removal of trees, tearing down or destruction of stone walls within the public right of way or portions thereof of the road.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
But, but there's.
It's already been moved.
Can I just add, if he, if he removes the stone, uh, there's, is there anything in the bylaw that's, I'd have to pull it up? But if you want to put it back, so he removes the stone wall, gets his equipment in there, does his tasks, puts his, till he can get the permit. I don't believe there's anything in there saying he can't do that. I mean, it would be repairing the wall.
There is actually something in here that says that I can temporarily remove the wall as long as I put the stones back. I have, it was right here. It says that, now I read all the bylaws beforehand before April 12th. And like you said, it's not part of your bylaws. You actually have to go searching scenic road to get the bylaws. And I even still did my due diligence on top of all this and call conservation on top of all of it to make sure I was legal. They get to the end. Do you see how disappointing this is? Because I'm only trying to do everything as po, as properly as I can. And now here I am sitting in this feeling like I'm on top of the cutting board for doing something wrong when I tried doing all the right things.
Don't, yeah, we, I know how you feel that way. Don't look at it that way. We're, you know, we, we like the fact that you're trying to do the right thing. We want to help you try to solve this problem within whatever our legal authority is. I'd much rather deal with you than the fact that your neighbor did it without asking any permission. So.
Yeah.
I mean.
Well, right here on the, right here on the bylaws says tearing down, removal or destruction of stone walls. This is on the scenic road. It says tearing down, removal or destruction of a stone wall shall mean the removal of more than one cubic foot of wall material per linear foot above existing grade, but shall not be construed to include temporarily removing and replacing at the same location with the same material.
Right.
It says that right, tearing down and destruction of a stone wall. It says I can temporarily remove it as long as I put it back.
And I, I would have to think that that was put in there for something just as this, so that they can get their equipment in there to do, to test.
And deny me access to my property. You know what I mean? That's what, that's what's happened.
What do you think, Skip?
Without seeing the wall, approximately how tall is the wall?
Oh, it's maybe two and a half feet, but there already was an opening in the wall. I didn't open the wall up that much.
I un, I understand that, but in reading what you were citing there, so, all right, tearing down or removal or destruction, where you were saying, shall not be construed to include temporary removal of same location with same materials. That allows you to remove one cubic foot of wall per linear foot above, um, existing grade. So if your wall is, we'll say three feet tall, you can remove three cubic feet of the wall.
And that's probably, I did take out of that.
If that is the case, then the way I'm reading the law, the way I'm reading the, our regulation, that is allowed.
Mm-hmm.
It would not require a scenic road permit.
I spray painted the opening before I actually removed the side. So there's dots of the existing opening on it. Uh, there's two dots if you drive up that road and that was existing opening of it. Just because I'm protecting myself from every possible thing I can get over there because I understand that that property's, you know, in a setting where someone's not going to want to see a house go in there. So I'm trying to protect myself as much as I can from anybody about anything. So the two dots that are on that, on that is the actual opening that was there. And to be honest, and now from my understanding, a public way must be wide enough for an emergency vehicle and a regular vehicle to be able to pass each other, correct? That is one of the laws of a public way. That's part of a public way. It has to be passable for an emergency vehicle and a passenger vehicle. That road is not wide enough for that.
Bushel Road is an approved town road.
I understand, but if you read on a roadway, it has to be wide enough for, uh, for, um, for an emergency vehicle and a passenger vehicle to be able to pass each other. If I don't have access to that property, I have to park on the side of that road. You can't get by me. There's no way you're getting by me at all over there.
Well, then you can't park on the side of the road.
So we're going to go on the property.
So you better cut a hole in the wall and get, get a, hold the opening.
But what I'm trying to say is, you know what I mean? That, but that's part of the safety of the public. If my truck's on the side of road forcing these people in the woods on the other side, there, that's a safety concern too. I mean, we can, you know, I'm not trying to play used car salesman, but you know what I mean?
But I, I mean, Skip, I didn't get the end of your point though. Could, I mean.
My, my point, my point that I was trying to make Walt is if he's got a, we'll say a three foot tall wall, he can remove up to three cubic feet of rock. That is it.
Mm-hmm.
All right. So if he can, you know, if he's got a three foot wall and he can remove temporarily up to three cubic feet of stone to access the property the way he needs to for this, you know, for the perk test and everything, then that does not require a scenic road permit. I would say that if he's going to make a permanent driveway entrance there, that could possibly require the, um, the stone wall to be opened a little more to allow for plowing in and out, getting cars in and out, deliveries. That will require a scenic road permit.
Correct. And then I have to turn the wall in with the stones that I take out. I understand that part of it and I will do that process when it comes time to it.
Right.
You know, I, I understand what I have to do. It's just that I'm at a perk test so I can move forward. You know what I mean?
The way I would read that section is temporary removal and reconstruction does not constitute, um, tearing down or destruction.
Yeah, I didn't.
Bring back what was there. Are you, just for reference, what was the approximate width of that opening prior to doing anything?
My mini excavator is eight feet wide. I went right through that wall without disturbing anything. Because I did that in, um, the end of March. And no, all, at all over there, right? Because I didn't move one stone. I went right between there. Because someone opened that up years and years ago. There's actually another opening in my property, probably 50 yards up the street. But it's not really that wide. I went for the wider one that was already up. I brought my mini right in there. The trees were opened up. I didn't have to land any trees or anything. I went right through it. And then when my bigger machine came through, that's about nine feet wide. I opened it up a little bit each way and that just squeezes through there.
So to construct a, a proper driveway per the driveway standards at that location, you would need to widen it.
Correct. I would, and I would get a permit.
And at that, for. Once you determine the location.
Roger, I, I think I can put this to bed pretty easily. You know, for the gentleman on Bushel Road, did you move more than three cubic feet of stone?
No, because my mini went in that.
You're good.
Went in that. So.
You're good because it was a temporary move. If the wall was three feet tall, you're, you're allowed to move up to three cubic feet.
Okay.
Once you get your machine in there, you do your deep hole, you take your machine out, you put the road, the stones back the way they were, we're golden.
Yeah, okay.
We're going to expand that to put your driveway in, you need to come before us for the scenic road permit.
That's what I was going to do. That's after I learned all this about the scenic road. That's my intentions of doing. I'd get a layout. So.
Yep. And just, uh, it, uh, the, the hearing itself can be pretty quick, but it's just a timeline for advertising and public notice and.
Fine. I'm in no huge rush to put the house up. I'm just, I, I have a scheduled perk test. I have to do it. You know what I mean?
Yep.
I think we should also, uh, Roger, would you inform, um, Rick Travers that, you know, of the decision, you know,
Yeah.
of, of our ruling or our understanding of the law and how his, his removal of the stones for him to be able to, uh, bring his larger equipment in is temporary and allowed by law.
Mm-hmm.
If he puts in a permanent driveway, then he's going to have to get his permit.
Right. Correct.
But I will say, despite that it bothered you because it always bothers you when somebody in the town tells you, um, you shouldn't be doing something. Rick did the right thing based on what he saw. He did, we just had to, you know,
Mm-hmm.
understand what you were doing so that we could know that you weren't in fact breaking the bylaw.
Correct.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention and coming in and having this discussion with us.
Thank you for working with me. Okay. I think, uh, that end then, right?
Pardon?
Where, then I'm all set on that end. I'll just get the perk test and, but then I'll, once I get that, I'll apply for the driveway. I'll put the stones back as soon as perk test is done. Okay. All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Do we have any other public comments or new business that way? Mary, is there anyone else? I see, I see a chat hand up that.
I think that was, uh, Skip.
Okay.
I don't see anyone else. Nope.
All right. Do we have, uh, I see we have 11 people here. Is there anyone else that's, uh?
Nobody else is wishing to speak.
Shall we move on with the agenda then?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Um, and we don't have any other new business.
A and Rs.
And we don't have any A and Rs. Um, so number nine, the DLT, a grant application with MRPC had a message from Karen Chapman today. She wants to, um, over the days have a phone discussion. So, uh, we'll do that. If anyone has on, uh, it's specifically, uh, the water district review and the DEP bylaw, um, compliance that we'd be discussing. Um, if anyone would like to join, I can, uh, send you the time once, once I hear from her. But they will begin, begin working on that. Um, any comments from the, uh, board members? Or, or Gary, did you have any comments? Do you want to be in on that?
I'm just taking over for John Harrington. It's going to be keeping an eye on the board for the trust. That's all.
Okay.
Welcome. I got nothing else to do.
Um, we'll move on. Approval of meeting minutes. Um, so thank you Walt for getting these prepared for us.
Roger, if I could just jump in real quick, if you don't need any more, if, be okay if I could just log off?
Oh, uh, yes, I think the only other.
I have only one question, Skip. Um, both of these main meeting minutes have quite a lot of, um, you were involved in them and did you have a chance to look at the draft?
I'll, I'll stick on.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I just, I just want to make sure because, uh, I'm prepared to edit them live this time because I don't want to do what I did last time and go back and then have to re-listen to the meeting notes.
Mm-hmm. So, well, do you want to, uh, lead through this since you have them?
Okay. Well, uh, right now, let's, uh, let's go with the, this, this is the minutes on the 13th of May. It started out rather, uh, boring. Um, and then we got to the motel, earthland development motel. And, um, uh, you'll see that I just went through and tried to cap, I couldn't capture everything, but captured the key questions that were asked. Um, and, uh, I just read this column here and see if you see anything. If you see your initial, you want to make sure it, uh, represents what you said at the time. We have, you know, LB1 and LB2.
I thought that looked good, Walt.
Looks good there.
Yeah.
Um, and I, you know, hitting. Then the next one was, um, going to, um, the public comment where everybody, um, was, um, not happy with, uh, the earthland development motel, um, got their say in, but they were no longer on. Um, and, uh, Steve Caldwell, uh, Skip, you think that's pretty there. Then, um, the A and R application, uh, that was pretty straightforward. No, nothing really controversial there. Um, again, if you see your initial, please read it and make sure it's accurate. Uh, then we went into a long conver, uh, it wasn't, uh, the, um, Bray Ave thing, which was rather short and easy. Then we had the approval of some of our minutes. And then we adjourned after two hours. So.
Approve those.
I'll second that.
That's, I have a motion to approve the minutes of May 13th as presented. Calling, uh, Roger Hoyt, chairman, yes. Richard Wright?
Yes.
Walt Meisner?
Yes.
Larry Boudreau?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes, still got me.
Uh, Lindsey Butler?
Yes.
Okay. The motion, all approved unanimously. I voted five to four and none against.
Okay.
On Walt's, the next meeting minutes?
Next meeting minutes on the 27th. Walking through them very quickly. If you remember, this is the one where, um, I gave a small report on the marijuana review team. Um, we didn't have any correspondences. There was the conversation about the state of emergency. Then you informed us, uh, of, that we received the grant. Um, and then we went into open discussion, public comment. And again, the bulk of that had to do with the motel and everyone's dismay over that, uh, motel. Uh, again, look for your initials. Skip had a few there. Um, and down here, this is the way it is, goes down to here. Then we had an A and R, no A and Rs. Uh, Mr. McSweeney wasn't there. Nothing about Bray Ave. Um, a brief conversation about earthland development. And then we went through the first, uh, formal presentation um, of the, um, uh, well, it was just questions, uh, with, it wasn't a formal presentation, but it was just questions about process that came up with Joshua and Joanne Wright. And, um, Scalp, you know, and Skip and Roger all had a few things to say. And then we went into new business and, uh, then under new business, we basically railed about the bylaws and how we aren't, uh, coordinated. And, uh, that we needed, uh, and it ended with, uh, uh, Skip reiterating that we should lobby the other town boards to get support for getting this done. Um, you know, and it had basically to do about what is our authority and how do we enforce our, the laws that were, you know, required to be overseen. Um, and then talked about next meeting and then we adjourned after almost two hours.
I'll make a motion to approve those.
I'll second that. Uh, we'll do a roll call vote. Chairman Roger Hoyt, yes. Richard Wright?
Yes.
Walt Meisner?
Yes.
Larry Boudreau?
I wasn't there, but they look great.
You're abstaining.
I apologize. My dog passed away that day, so.
Oh.
Sorry.
It was a family.
Yeah.
Morning night.
Our condolences.
Lindsey?
Yes.
Yes. So motion carries for nothing. Yes, sorry, Larry, and I, someone was trying to phone into the meeting and I kept asking if it was you, so I apologize for bringing your name up last meeting.
That's fine.
Understood that that's a.
Certainly, if you read these things, because some of them are sort of controversial or whatever, if you read these things and think anything was missaid upon second read of them or whatever, don't hesitate to let us know. We can always amend the minutes. Thanks for hanging in there, Skip.
Yes, thank you, Skip. And announcements, we've got the upcoming special town meeting and annual town meeting on June twenty-second. We don't, planning board does not have any items on the warrant meeting this year. And then on the twenty-four, twenty-third is the annual town election. And we have a meeting the following night, and we'll have a public hearing, so whoever is elected on the twenty-third, at least one member needs to get sworn in. If both members who are elected on the twenty-third can get sworn in by Wednesday, that would be great. Otherwise, we'll have, as the associate member, we need to attend so that we have four members for the hearing. That is it. Next meetings are Wednesday, June fourth, which, from talking to Mary, would be a remote meeting. And then Wednesday, July eighth. I know on our schedule, we had it eighth or fifteenth, so, or have any input from members as a preference on the eighth or the fifteenth of July?
Doesn't matter, May.
I think I'm on vacation the fifteenth week, the week of the fifteenth. Up in Maine, although I can do it on my phone if you need me.
We would be.
I'm good any day.
It is, if we, we, our traditional summer schedule is one meeting for July and August, and that gives.
I'm good for the eighth, not the fifteenth.
Okay. Shall we, on the, on the eighth then?
Sounds good.
Works for me.
Okay.
Okay.
July eighth, and then, uh, following Wednesday, August twelfth, those will be our regularly scheduled meetings.
I have just one ending question. Lindsey, are you gonna do the minutes this time or me? I took notes, but I.
I was gonna ask you ahead of time. I, yeah, I can do them, though.
So I, I have, I have some notes as well, so, but if you can do them, that's fine.
All right. And, uh, customarily, on the first meeting after the town election, we have a reorganization. If members could think about, uh, how we should do that. If anyone feels that they would like to take a different position. Chairmanship is available. Don't be shy.
Roger, if I could just jump in there real quick.
Certainly, Skip.
I have one year left on my associate member to the board, and I will not be seeking to be appointed to that again.
Okay.
If the chairmanship is available, how many, how many years are left in your term?
I have one year left.
So I would give this little nugget of knowledge to the board. You may want to look at shaking things up a little bit, so that if Roger chooses not to run for reelection, you're not left with a void. You'll have Roger to kind of help whoever is going to take over for him if he chooses not to be chair. And you'll have me for one final year. Otherwise, you're, you're gonna have a bit of a hole, so just, just kind of mull that around.
I agree.
Thank you, Skip.
On that cherry note.
I know it's been extended with the delayed election, so, um, members for sticking on board.
I really do.
Anyone have any other items?
Just one other thing I may toss out there, Roger. It's, even back when I was chair, it's always difficult to get somebody to try and sign up for a five-year term. It may be something the board wants to look at. And you may have to talk with, with counsel on this or even the selectmen. Is it something where the board wants to amend how the terms are going? Do you want to drop from a five-year to a three-year, if that's possible? That would require you to do two, one year, two, another year, and then one on a third year. But you may be able to get people to volunteer for this board a little bit easier if it's only a three-year commitment versus a five. Sometimes that five-year commitment really scares people away.
It does.
It should have scared me away.
I've been here a year. I haven't even started my five years yet.
I don't know, Rick. You served before and then you came back, so it can't be that bad.
No.
I, I would, I would say two things. I do think that that's something that should be looked at, because, you know, two, three-year terms is six years. The one thing I worry about, the, the, one thing that's become apparent to me after me being here for just one year, there is such a big, steep learning curve with this board. The bylaws, getting an understanding of them, how it all functions. And, you know, here I've been on this board for just a year. And now this whole scenic bylaw discussion we came up was sort of like, you know, where is this coming from and how do we, how do we deal with it? And so I do think it is one of those boards that does have a pretty steep learning curve. And that's probably the reason why it's five years. The other idea or thought we had, Skip, was should we, and I know we have to change this in the bylaws, but should we have two associate members? Because we were having trouble getting, you know, a quorum for a couple of public hearings we had back there, because you weren't available and but, but we thought when, um, when, uh, I'm, I'm just drawing a blank, what's her name, resigned, that she would be a good.
Carolyn.
Yeah, Jer, Carolyn, yes. Carolyn, when Carolyn resigned, that if it would be a good idea to have two associate members so that we weren't, so that we had that flexibility of being able to handle public hearings and, in, in that way, so that was.
Serves, because the board's authority is under the subdivision control act and all of that, if memory serves, you're limited to one associate member by the actual statute that this board has authority under.
Really?
I want to say, I think back when I was chair, I had looked at that option, and I believe it was not possible.
Yeah. If it was a seven-member board, you would have two associate members. But I, I think it's.
Okay.
It gets, yeah.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Third.
Okay, do we need, I guess we have to roll call vote, so Chairman Roger Hoyt says yes.
Yes.
Walt?
Yes.
Lindsey?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
I guess we're adjourned. See you in two weeks.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.